Okay, I was meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My condolences to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under my name, invincible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Vicki, roll call, please.
Uh, Councilmember Bozett.
Here.
Councilmember Reva.
Here.
Councilmember Conover. Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Justin.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
And Councilmember Whitton.
I am here.
Next up, we've got the approval of council meeting minutes for March twentieth.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, March twentieth and April twenty-fourth, Mr. Chairman.
Second and motion.
Okay, we've got a first and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. Next up, we've got our first reading.
Notice here by giving the tax pay to Porter County, Indiana, that the proper legal officers of Porter County, Indiana, will meet the Porter County Government at Constitution Building, at 155 Indiana Avenue, operated on Indiana, on May twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, at five thirty PM, to consider the following additional corporations and steps to the county's budget for the year, two thousand and eighteen, and to track any further bills which might happen before the council. General Fund Circuit Court, um, thirty-one sixty-one. Mental Health Drug Court, six thousand dollars. Adult Probation, eleven hundred dollars. A reduction of thirty-six thousand three fifty-five. Jail, thirty-one thirty, Training and Education, one thousand dollars. Reassessment Fund, eleven eighty-eight. Contractual Services, twenty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty. Adult Community Corrections Fund, ninety-one sixty-two. Salaries, thirty-eight thousand two hundred. Eleven twenty hourly, nineteen thousand nine hundred and seventy. Twelve-ten FICA, four thousand four hundred and eighty-two. Twelve-ten medical life insurance, seventy thousand three. Twelve-thirty CURE, four thousand two hundred and seventy-nine. Twenty-one-ten office supply, one thousand. Thirty-nine fifty contractual services, one hundred and fifty and one ninety-eight. Tax pay appearing at such meetings shall have the right to be brought down. The additional corporations and finding makes will be referred to the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance, which may be written as something against state positions here on the report to the Department.
I know, I.
Within fifteen days of the review of the certified copy of the action taken by the county attorney for Porter County, which may be seen in the such.
Well done, Vicki.
Thank you, Vicki.
Good job.
Okay, first up this evening, we have the Circuit Court, Judge Harper, General Fund, Circuit Court One.
I'll make a motion to approve the additional six thousand to Mental Health Drug Court.
Second.
First and second, any additional discussion? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor, please, oh, excuse me, additional, uh, Vicki, roll call, please.
Okay, Councilmember Reva.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitton.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bozett.
Yes.
All right, next up, we have the adult probation.
I'll make a motion on the thirty-six, three-five-five reduction to eleven, one-zero-zero salaries, and the one-forty-four, thirty-six, five-five to thirty thousand eight ninety-eight Assistant Chief, and the thirty thousand eight ninety-eight to zero probation officer.
Second.
Okay, first and second, is there any additional discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozett.
Yes.
And Councilmember Reva.
Yes.
And you didn't do one bottom, right?
What did you not?
Okay.
No, I just did the first.
Next, we have the probation user fees for the adult probation.
I'd like to make a motion on several things here. The Form one forty-four, ten thousand one thirty-six to nine thousand six fifty-three Assistant Chief, and the nine thousand six fifty-three to ten thousand one thirty-six. Probation Officer, I'd also like to include my motion, the one-forty-four, twenty-two thousand eight sixty-eight, to twenty-five thousand nine eighty-one Assistant Chief, fifteen thousand nine eighty-one to zero probation.
Second.
Okay, a first and a second, is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozett.
Yes.
And Councilmember Reva.
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have our Planning Commission, moving forty-five thousand from consultants to.
I'll make a motion on all those transfers and the one-forty-four.
Second.
All right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
First and second, uh, any additional discussion, questions?
So, we're taking a, we're adding a new Senior Highway Engineer?
How many are there now?
Come join us. I mean, was this part of what we discussed before, or is this part of the grant plan, or is there something new?
Uh, originally, when we had the budget approved, we were asking for an Engineer One position. That Engineer One position, we were looking at somebody that would have maybe, hopefully up to two years of experience in engineering, would not be a professional engineer. We interviewed six candidates, and they were graduates coming out of university, you know, fine engineers, I'm sure, but one of the things that we realized is we were going to end up having to spend a lot of time having to train these people to put them into the position. So, we spoke with the commissioners about that. We created the Senior Highway Engineering Position, and then split the salary between the Highway Administrative Budget, under the Highway Engineering Section, and also under the Cumulative Bridge Fund, since the bridge, bridges are going to be a major topic with this position. So, we're eliminating the Engineer One position.
Okay.
We also eliminated, under the one-forty-four, for the Highway Administration, I'm getting into the next section, too, here, the Project Two, the Project Manager Two position, we eliminated that, because the commissioners wanted additional funding for the Highway Superintendent position, so, um.
So, are they, are they increasing the Highway Superintendent position salary, then?
I believe so, but I guess that's a question that probably would be needed to ask of them.
Do you need, so you don't need the Project Manager Two?
Uh, we're eliminating it, yes, 'cause we're.
Oh, you're eliminating it, you don't think you need it?
Um, we're hoping we don't.
The what? What did you say?
He said.
We're hoping we do not. Right now, I would say we do not have the work, but if a lot of development does start picking up, yeah, we probably would have to come back in and figure out how we're going to deal with that.
So, is the, from what you know, is the elimination of the Project Manager Two, is that their, so they're taking that money to give a higher salary to this director? Is that what you think?
Correct, correct, and then also to bolster up the salary a little bit for the Senior Highway Engineer position.
Hmm. So, will he come into us in the next few months, more than likely?
Probably at that budget time.
Yeah, but it sounds like maybe he might be coming back to us for a Project Manager Two position at some point, if the work.
I, you know, if it wouldn't be, it would be next year, probably.
Okay.
I don't even know, if time budgets start up and everything, and we start looking at budgets, I'll really see that we have a need for that position at that time. I'd always agree upon with the commissioners and stuff, and myself, and Mike Navat, your County Engineer, that we probably do not need that position right now.
But the only problem I have is sometimes we, we eliminate a position to give more money to another position, and then come back and say, well, gosh, we, we needed this guy after all, and this woman after all. Like, we're not going to, like, cut the person's salary that we gave the raise to, in all likelihoods, so it's just a straight-up.
Right now, the Project Manager One position that we have going is being able to handle all the development and looking over the projects with the Highway Department. If we get a Senior Engineer position on it, we really feel that that's going to help us immensely.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's why I'm saying, I, right now, it's not viewed, that we do not need the Project Manager Two position.
How many engineers do you have now?
Uh, we have two currently on staff, um, Mike Navat, your County Engineer, and then we do have an Engineer One position in the Stormwater Section, Chelsea Bradford.
Right on, that's my questions.
Anyone else have any further questions?
Those are good concerns, because it does look as if, and you're saying you're going to evaluate it at budget time, right?
I, even at budget time, with that coming up in June, July, I doubt very much we're still going to see the needs. I mean, if I do come back, it's not going to be until next year.
Okay. No further comments, questions? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please, Ms. Vicki.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozett.
Yes.
Councilmember Reva.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
And Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Mr. Chairman, since we've really discussed the one, the next one, forty-four, I'll go ahead and make a motion, forty-five thousand to zero Engineer One, fifty thousand to zero Project Manager Two.
Second.
Zero to forty-five thousand, Engineer Highway Senior.
Second.
A first and a second, is there any further discussion or question? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Whitton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozett.
Yes.
Councilmember Reva.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
And Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, Bob, I have a good night.
And next up, we have the Tourism, Porter County Convention.
Hey, it's our friends from Tourism. What do we pay fifteen bucks, what do we pay now?
Best of Nation Concierge.
What is it now? I'll make a motion to approve this for discussion.
The cap's ten.
You want a second?
The cap's ten, right now. The problem is, we've got a guy that's been there so long, this is for our part-time salary increase.
Yeah, I follow that.
He's been there so long.
I'm with you. You're moving fast, but I'm with you.
I thought you guys were getting on board to fight for fifteen, raising the minimum wage here.
No, we want the cap at fifteen, but it's just so we don't have to come back next time, so.
So, you don't like to come for us?
No, not at all. I'm not going to lie.
We like a loyal eye.
I know, she likes to come.
All right.
Um, so, we just want to raise the cap and give him his back pay, because he's worked these premium hours on the weekend, and he's accumulated fifty-three dollars in not being paid.
That's what his back pay is.
That's his back pay.
So.
We're making it effective three, twelve, is it?
Yeah.
So, this employee's going to ten fifteen hour?
For the weekend, so he's, he's at, he's at ten dollars right now for regular, but anytime on the weekends or holidays, they get a premium, and we can't pay him the premium because we're, we're maxed out at ten.
Really nice.
So, we're just raising the cap.
So, I don't, just, I mean, generally, I'm, I'm for this, but generally speaking, I've got to tell you, I, I don't like the idea of coming for increase and saying we're going to retroactive it. That's, that's really not the way we like to do it. We like to have, hey, come in, we want to make these increases, and then we know.
We'd rather done it way back when, but we did.
We're not talking about a ton of money here, and it isn't much an hour, so frankly, I get it. I understand why you guys are here, but.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Roll call.
What's the comparative salary for that position? Have you guys checked with other tourism boards to see where we are?
I'm sorry, what was that?
That, what's the comparative salary for that position?
That, I don't know. We do comparisons for the full-time staff with other deals, but not, not the hourly, but if you see what they do.
Yeah, I know, we've been there, I mean, we've been there quite often, but.
We're compared to Lake County. I'm compared to Lake County.
Well, we wouldn't.
Five hundred dollars an hour, and we're all related.
Let's watch.
Why don't you step in?
They're all related over there. I understand.
Yeah, no comment.
We're doing that.
Yeah. All right, any further questions or comments?
No.
Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bozett.
Yes.
Councilmember Reva.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
And Councilmember Whitton.
Yes.
That was so much more pleasant than last time.
See you next month. All in the presentation, Mitch, it's all in the presentation.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Next up, we've got the Portage Township Assessor for Reassessment Fund.
I'll make the motion on the additional twenty-seven forty.
First and second. Any additional questions or comments?
I'm here.
So, also.
Oh, good.
So, we didn't have enough budgeted for this position, is that what it is?
Uh, what happened was, um, we have a four-year contract with Scott Potts, my, um, field person for commercial and industrial. When the contract, I wasn't the assessor when the contract was made, so what he did is, he waited till the end of the four years, which was January first of this year, to present me with the bill, which was like a couple months ago.
Really?
And it's like, for, for all the four years, I was like, well, I can't do that. So, I said, now I have to go for the county council. I told them if we retain him for the next four years for the reassessment, then he would have to bill me yearly.
Does he assess all the commercial properties in Porter Township, then? Is that what he does?
Yeah, and industrial.
Say industrial, what?
You know, like, uh, US Steel and, um, everything.
Did we enter that contract with him, that we, it would be balloon payment at the end?
No, um, I wasn't part of the contract.
Did he tell you why he waited four years? That just seems so weird.
I know, I know.
You wanted a big check.
No, he didn't say. I said, well, you can't do that. I said, I have to be billed on a yearly basis. I said, I just don't have it. He didn't realize. Well, he doesn't realize that my money doesn't carry over every year, you know, so I'm stuck with a forty-seven thousand dollar bill.
And you verified the bill, everything was legit?
Mm-hmm.
That was all.
Yeah, he gave me a list. I have a list right here of all the properties he did, so it's been verified.
Is mine on there, 'cause it's too high. Too high.
Are you guys making changes going forward? What are you guys doing? Are you going to stick with him?
I, I hope so. Yeah, our contract is going to be renewed, hopefully, next month, in June.
Same terms?
They pay yearly. Uh, yeah, well, I told them, I said, you have to do this yearly, uh, because I can't do it.
Who reviews their contract before you sign it?
Uh, the.
Do you have Scott McQuarrie, or?
I have to go for the commissioners, um, for approval.
All right.
So, 'cause I have to accept bids, and so I'm hoping to retain him, his work is exceptional.
When, when was his work completed?
Uh, the contract ended January first of two thousand and eighteen, but I thought it ended at the end of the term.
If I think what Jeff is asking is when he finished the work.
Oh, January first of.
So, he worked all the way to January first, like, New Year's Eve, he was out there assessing, perhaps the guy.
Well, that's the end of our day.
But then it took him five months to bill us after that?
Uh, yeah.
That's kind of high.
So, I, I know, I was a little surprised myself.
And what are you going to do? You've got money like that.
So.
You said US Steel, I'm not interested. I, they, US Steel Industrial, because recently somebody told me, another mill in the county, that the state doesn't allow counties to assess some industrial properties.
We do.
But they do that.
Porter Township for US Steel, we do. Um, we assess them, like, uh, for the state assesses US Steel in Gary, and Middle Steel is assessed by the state. So, but for Porter, for some reason, they're not included with the state, but we are. So, if they add anything, we got Scott out there.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have any further questions?
This is just a one-time deal, you know.
Uh, Ms. Vicki, roll. Can I get a, how much is an assessor's total reassessment budget right now, or fund?
It's just hers.
Yours comes out of his.
Hmm.
Your reassessment comes out of it.
Uh, yeah.
So, his, I'm just curious how.
Yeah, as soon as, uh, he hit me with the bill, I had to call into Vicki, and it's like, okay.
They may have to raise your office expense, yeah.
Tell them we're going to make payments over the next.
Well, we like to come in on reassessments, yeah, over the next, the next four years.
That's crazy.
She's getting motion sickness, bring that thing up, yeah.
The total budget, that was true, was five hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty.
And what's left in there now is four fifty-four, almost four fifty-six.
Eighty-five percent left.
Right on, my question, thanks.
Any further questions? Uh, Ms. Vicki, roll call, please.
Uh, Councilmember Reva.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitton.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bozett.
Yes.
Thank you, Alton.
Thanks, Alton. See you later.
All right, next up, we've got the jail.
Andy, I'll make the, uh, motion on the additional one thousand to Training and Ads Plus, I would also, on the Adult Community Corrections, I'll make the motion on all those additional.
Second.
DOC grant in the one-forty-four.
In the one-forty-four.
They're all in one session.
Yeah.
But not the second.
Well, I.
Yeah, and it's not the, not, not the.
Not the General Fund one. And Mr. Larson, your second stand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, they are.
All right, we got a first and second.
They will.
You guys want to come on down?
I have one question.
Would you like to join us?
The price is right.
I got bad eyes, it's hard to see all over.
How's it going, guys?
I have one question on the, uh, the grant that you have for this, um, Cumulative Corrections Offperson. Um, is that renewable, and for how many years?
Um, they're, we're going to, they're probably going to give it to us every year, which is our second year with them.
Oh, okay.
And what they've told us is, once we get it, we'll have it.
Yeah.
And, um, we actually asked more this year, from last year, we asked for a, um, an assistant for court, um, for, um, Rachel, and they gave us that.
Part-time.
Okay.
So, that money's still in the grant?
Well, that was my question, I just, you know, sometimes with grants, after three years, it runs out, and then the county has to pick it up.
No, they're, they're giving us, I mean, nothing's guaranteed in life, but they're saying it looks good, but, you know, because what we're doing is, um, what they want us to do with programs in the jails.
Okay.
Um, so, they're encouraging us, and they're encouraging other, actually, other sheriffs to apply for this, but we, we were the, uh, next to, um, Viggo and Marion, we were the, um, we got more money than any other county in the state.
Wow.
Wow, that's wonderful. So, that's good.
Sounds good.
Anyone else have any further questions? Okay, hearing none, uh, Ms. Vicki, roll call, please.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Reva.
Yes.
And Councilmember Reva.
Yes.
All right, next up, we've got the Sheriff's General Fund, moving fifty-five nine oh one to, fifty-five thousand nine hundred and one dollars to zero for the first-class patrolmen.
I'll make a motion on the one-forty-four.
Second.
First and second, any questions?
So, are we, are we creating a whole new corporal spot, then, that we're doing here?
Yep.
Can you just, off the top of your head, tell me, how many, just, I'm just curious, is.
This is one we.
How many, how many patrolmen do you have, and how many corporals and rank file?
You know, off the top.
What we have.
I've got it, hold on. Right now, we have, um, two division commanders, three captains, five lieutenants, ten sergeants, sudden corporals, twenty-nine first class, six second class.
Okay. And, are you guys, this is a promotion, in total?
Well, the problem was, when we moved, when we took over the drug units, not problem, but how it affected our ranking structure, certain, and I have a guy, a, a ranking officer in Chicago, um, and it's all kind of came around where we took care of the drug unit from a struc, with structure standpoint, but now that, we, we've been one short of ranking officer on midnights, and that's where this would go. Um, and it's, we, we tried to figure out what, why it all happened, it's just because what we did, we, we took a lieutenant off the road and put him on in the detective bureau, because we took the lieutenant back in the drug unit, so at some point in time, it all kind of, we were short one.
Yeah, and we talked about this a bit, but, so I get it.
And you're not just going to be short patrolmen coming back to us, I'd like.
No, no.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone else have any further questions? Uh, hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozett.
Yes.
Councilmember Reva.
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
How's that drug unit doing, good?
Great. I mean, we're not really coming up with the numbers, um, but I think at some point in time, we can, we can get to that information, we just don't want to publicize it, because we have people behind us with.
Right.
I would be curious, yeah, I, at one point, a couple years ago, I got some, you know, sort of some data, and I'm just kind of curious what kind.
I think when you get, you see what we're doing, it's, it's, um, and we'd like to invite you to our, um, we'll invite you guys to our monthly meeting. Um, we have up to seventy-five officers from five states, or five counties show up, um, US Attorney's going to speak at our next meeting on June twenty-fifth, so ten o'clock at our station.
Is that similar to the last meeting we were invited to?
Yeah.
A week ago?
Actually, I, I wanted to praise, uh, Sheriff Reynolds for that, because I was invited Actually, I wanted to praise Sheriff Reynolds for that because I was invited to that like all of us, and I spoke to a couple of sheriffs afterwards, and it seems like everyone wanted to continue that effort that you started, so they were really open to continuing that discussion, and they were really comfortable with what happened at that meeting, so, so that's very cool. Thanks for sticking your neck out there and getting that started. For those of you in the audience that don't know what happened, Sheriff Reynolds started a discussion with the local sheriffs in the surrounding communities and as far, some were quite far away, and had some positive discussions about what they incur in their day-to-day functions in, in that position, so it wa, it was a really neat program, so thanks.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Awesome. Anyone else?
Okay.
Thank you guys, have a good evening.
You too, nice to see you.
All right, next up we've-
Thank you.
We've got soil and water conservation-
Did we do the thousand dollars on the bill?
We did?
We covered it all.
We got it all.
Grab in, it's going to be a fast ride.
All right, now, new this evening, we've got an introduction to our new employee, Mr. Jared O'Brien with soil and water conservation. How you doing?
Good evening.
It's just my incredible privilege to introduce our brilliant new coworker, Jared O'Brien, he comes from us, for us, from the Indiana State Department of Agriculture, and he's the district conservation project manager, and he's hit the ground running, already been out in the field visiting with a lot of landowners and helping with the federal work, he has incredible computer skills, so we're excited about that, mapping and such, that's something that we were lacking in our office. And I'll be quiet so he can talk.
Yeah, I just want to take a minute to introduce myself. As Michelle said, I was with the State Department of Agriculture for a couple of years before joining Porter County Soil and Water Conservation District. There I was in their conservation branch, the Division of Soil Conservation, and was tasked with voluntarily working with private landowners to get conservation on the ground. For those of you not from an agriculture background or familiar with terminology, just a lot of cover crops, keeping something growing in the farm fields throughout the year, minimizing soil disturbance, also working with the federal, United States Department of Agriculture, Natural Resource Conservation Service tech team, doing engineering designs to help keep the soil on the fields, not only that, but also working with urban stakeholders, landowners, rain gardens, any conservation practice you think of. I was pulled on to a few statewide projects for GIS, targeting conservation in priority area watersheds, so just trying to keep water quality, keep the watersheds healthy and clean, and just kind of covering five counties in northwest Indiana. So now, I am very happy to live in Porter County, my home county, that I've been living in with my wife and our two boroughs for the last six seasons.
So you were pulled out of state projects, how does Porter County line up with what you were doing statewide?
Just say we're the best.
Porter County has one of the better, let's say, staff and personnel in their office. They're always looking for work to do, no one's sitting on their hands, I like that, I like to keep busy, it makes the day go quicker. There's a very diverse demographic in Porter County, where you have agriculture in the southern half primarily and then urban up north, so it keeps the days fun, there's a lot of people that are willing to do the best they can with their land, and that's something that I think is just enjoyable to work with.
So does a farmer approach you if they have questions, or do you approach the farmer to tell them they're having issues? Or how does that work?
Yeah, absolutely, that's a great question, so sometimes they'll come in because we'll, we'll put feelers out there, send mailers saying we have cost share assistance available to kind of get them rolling in that direction if they're not already adopting these practices. I will kind of target farms and producers, either meeting them at other functions, or using geographic information system to find stream reaches that are impaired for oil or certain excess nutrients. And so, like I said, it's a two-way street, a lot of times they come in, sometimes we're coming to them or just kind of starting that conversation.
So are you guys involved, we had that flooding down south, are you guys involved with trying to fix that land, or is that not something you guys get involved with?
In, in a roundabout way, usually that, that specific instance was elevated and I think more at the county engineer's side, but I think a lot of farmers are seeing that these flooding events are happening more often and are getting more severe, so it's the best way to prepare for a changing climate in the future, and we're just telling them that, you know, more growing plants-
What did you say a second ago? Easy with that word. Change and climate.
And agricultural climate.
The silverware in the future, we're going to blame all the flooding on you.
So they're going to have to produce more on smaller amounts of plants, is essentially what's going to happen.
Do you find it difficult, there's a lot of the farmers up here lease property versus ownership, I mean-
Yes.
And so, is, are they more open to discussion, or are they more difficult to reach?
It runs forward there, it depends on if they're very proactive themselves, or in some cases, the actual landowner just kind of wants to stay in the tractor end because it's been working for them for a while, so it's, it's all the place, and that's, that's part of what keeps it fun, really. That's seen in all five counties since we've covered before, I mean, just to this singular town.
How much in recent years with the development of the stormwater department, do you guys interact with them?
Well, Mike is, the engineer is actually an associate supervisor, we thought it was necessary to welcome him because he's incredibly talented, so we wanted him as an associate supervisor, and fortunately, he accepted, so he's been coming to our meetings as much as he can. And we have a great discussion going.
Good communication.
Because there's certainly, you know, a partnership there, it goes hand in hand. If we can do more to keep the water on the fields with those cover crops and such, that prevents them from cleaning the ditches and creating problems.
Makes our job easier as council members.
Right, and yeah, we're trying prevention, that's what we're trying to do, so, you know, we have a lot of wonderful landowners in Porter County, and they're interested in that federal cost share, so we're helping them get it by having a talented employee like this, we're able to process their paperwork faster, we're able to get field visits completed more quickly, and so they're then able to get their funds more quickly and practices installed.
We're working towards, going to be working on a few grants, hopefully that'll help support field-based educational pieces, we're, we're out there working with the landowners, showing them some practices that are already established, how they're working, how they can work for them, their land too.
Interesting. Any other questions? Well, welcome aboard.
Yeah, welcome.
Look forward to working with you, Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, nice meeting you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Vicki, we have our second reading, please.
Where it is concerned that it's unnecessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in general, but therefore, the other thing is resolved by the Porter County, Council of Porter County, Indiana, that for the expensive of the tax, we have a following additional some to mark here by appropriate out of context, and where the provisions specified subject to law, government, and state, general fund and overall reduction of twenty-nine thousand three fifty-five, reassessment fund eleven eighty-eight, twenty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty, adult community correction fund ninety-one six two hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and ninety dollars, that's the second three.
Make a motion to approve the second.
Here we have a first and second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reva?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jefferson?
Motion case. We're going to move the attorney's report to the end, if Mr. Harper makes it, he was running a little behind due to some previous engagements, so right now we'll just go to the, unless anyone has a problem with that. We'll go to the, any other matter that must prop, or might, may properly become before the council, starting off with the Porter Hospital LLC's form CF-1, we've got Jared Smith, if you don't mind, come on down. You guys should all have a copy of it in front of you. And Vicki, you had a chance to review this?
Yes.
And everything looks good? You know, Harold looked at this and everything's fine there too?
I believe so, yes.
Vicki.
So what's going on on the hospital? What exciting things are happening?
I will say we're continually focused on growth from a quality perspective, CMS star rating, we're a four-star hospital, which represents top twenty percent of the nation, so we're currently focused on developing our service lines, developing a clear pathway of a continuum of care for better patient outcomes and a better experience, so.
And yeah, apparently you're, I mean, you're increasing personnel and employees-
Salaries?
Yeah.
We are correct.
So in the year ahead, are we anticipating even more growth in salaries and more importantly in employees then?
You know, right now I can't forecast the exact number of fluctuation, I will continue to exceed the one-twenty-six, and we'll be continuing to pursue new strategic initiatives.
I'm sorry to hear you, what was that?
We'll be pursuing new strategic initiatives and we'll continue to surpass the one-twenty-six number.
You guys still, is the hospital still for sale?
It is not, to my knowledge. I mean, I think we've got a great opportunity here, you know, we actually, a couple of months ago, brought in a new market CEO, and working closely with our sister facility, LaPorte Hospital, and as well Stark Hospital, we have a good opportunity to further advance the services we provide, so it's exciting times.
You guys just broke ground over there in LaPorte, right?
It's exciting times.
Any further questions?
I'll make a motion, we accept the form CF-1.
Did you have a question? Now, when is this, is next year, last year? No?
Oh, no.
The last year is paid twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, it's a sliding scale though, we're sliding our way, you know, so.
All right, any further discussion or any questions?
We're almost there, a few more years and we're full-blown citizens of Porter County.
Okay, roll call please, Ms. Vicki.
Councilmember Whitton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bostick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reva?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jefferson?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bostick?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thanks for having me, appreciate it.
Appreciate your time. All right, next up, we wanted to discuss the budget meeting schedule for this year. In your package, you guys have a copy of last year's, just wanted to see what your guys' thoughts were, when you guys wanted to get everything done by.
So Vicki, when's, you and I met Vicki, and we talked a little bit about this, so refresh my memory, when's, when do you need it from us? Done, final, the end, here it is.
When would I like it?
Let me ask that question in two days.
I didn't hear that.
When do you need it, and when do you-
Final of November first.
Yeah, but you need it before that, so that's the last day you need it by.
Yes, no, October, however, there is another auditor conference late October.
The conferences you guys are going to have, man.
She's the treasurer, man.
She's the auditor, by the way.
No, she's the treasurer of the auditor.
So, we're thinking the latest would be like the tenth of October.
You're saying you need final reading by the tenth of October?
No, no, final reading could be up through November first.
Yeah, but you, you need it before November first.
Yes.
So when do you need final reading by? When do you, Vicki or Bennett, auditor of Port County?
A week prior.
If you're going to continue your past practice of deciding salary issues at the end, that requires a lot of work on our-
We had it last time, October twenty-sixth. But that wasn't-
Final adoption.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking you. That's fine, so that date's okay, that worked out all right?
Right before your conference.
Wow, someone's got to be there. I think the last week, October, you're out of town, is that what it is?
That's what you said last time, yeah.
And really, we decide, once we get the raises figured, Vicki?
Right.
Once we get the raises figured, I mean, then the rest is just all interpolating numbers, so you really, I mean-
Well, hopefully it'll be in the LOW system, which will save them some time too.
Just to share what Vicki said here, she said the twenty-first through the twenty-eighth is going to be their conference week.
Well, we can have our final reading during that time, I mean, our final adoption, that's not a big deal.
But they just have to have it beforehand and-
Does everybody leave the office? You're the only one gone, or does everybody leave?
No, not everyone.
So if we did something similar, Vicki, not that I'm saying that's what we do, but if we did something similar to last year, that would be workable with you?
Yes, you can, they have final adoption October twenty-ninth, thirtieth, or thirty-first, as long as we get the numbers of any salaries prior to-
So last time we did it October, last time we did it October eleventh was our last scheduled date. Right on?
That would work.
So anything that jumps out at you that was problematic in our schedule last year? Anything that caused you any undue duress or consternation? That means trouble, hear me?
I was going to say, what the hell's going on?
I appreciate you, uh-
It was smoother than last kind of changes where we have to calculate any kind of change
for like a, that always can throw up.
But if we did it by like-
It was smoother.
We did it by mid-October, we're still growing.
Yes, yes.
Right on.
Right on.
I pulled the information out of Vicki, that I need.
Took a while.
So what do you guys think, follow a similar schedule, start mid-September?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, we've tried, listen guys, we've tried different ways just to refresh everybody's memory, or those who might not have been here, we've tried to extend it out and do it starting in July, or August, I mean, but that, it's hard, people have things going on in August to have all those meetings, September, starting in mid-September and going through mid-October for the hard-line meetings was best for everybody's schedules, however, it's a lot of meetings in a short period of time, but it seemed to have enabled most people to be here.
So should we just set some dates like this and set them out and see what your guys' thoughts are? Is everyone okay with that? Jeff, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, Vicki, when are the budgets due from the departments? Have we set that date yet?
No, you haven't yet.
What is your suggestion now?
Traditionally, you're set it for July first, but we've found that many departments aren't ready by July first, especially those that have boards that have to approve their budgets.
So what are you recommending?
Mid-July.
That's more for us, that's more for us to, so what are your guys' thoughts?
I mean, if we did it like mid-July, that's pretty cool, sixteen? Yeah, right on.
July sixteen.
Yeah.
So, would you get that word out to the departments, they're going to be due July sixteen?
July sixteenth, firm, not flexible.
And if they're not in, we stick with last year's budget?
Or less.
I mean, is that-
We flat-lined, man.
There you go.
Or less.
Or less, I like that.
Or less. We leave ourselves the opportunity to cut.
Oh, we, another thing that I wanted to bring up, what about raises? Are we asking them not to do those, we'll discuss them at the end, or do them as they did this year? How do you guys want to cut off?
So, so here's the dealio on that, I mean, they always get it, they always get it wrong. So, we can, if we tell, if we tell them to put it in their budgets, all their requests they put in, it's, it's just hard for us to start pulling them back out. What we've done, and I'm not saying this is the best way, but it somehow made it the clearest, several things that we need to have in front of us, and with the LOW system, this will probably be very helpful, we need to copy, or we need to be able to see what we approved the year before, we need to be able to see whatever additionals we granted throughout the years, we can see what was actually expended, because I'm going to have some questions about those additionals, whether they're reoccurring, or whether they're one-time jobs, and then I would suggest that they put any particular raise request on a separate form, or a separate sheet, or however you want to do it, where we can see it separately. Everyone's going to ask for, except for the prosecutor, who never asks for his staff to have raises, but everybody else is going to ask for just the world, probably, but if there's any particular job descriptions of change, if there's any particular promotions that have occurred, if they're restructuring their departments and they have, you know, reducing some positions and they're adding on to other ones, we want to be able to see that separately so we can have some detailed discussion about those. That's my suggestion.
Everyone else agrees?
Great, yep, you betcha.
Jeff, you good with that now? Makes sense to me.
Separate prosecutor part, Jeff's with me. I didn't make that comment.
And Vicki, there's a way-
We asked some things on the-
We got him into skip ahead because I know we're going to talk about the LOW system, but there is a way to do that in the LOW system?
I think it might actually be LOW.
LOW?
What is this? Does that say LOW?
That looks like LOW up today, man. That's the worst logo. Okay, so, Ms. Joy and I will get together some dates for you guys for the budget schedule and make sure everyone, that works for everybody.
Yeah.
So we'll go from there. Great, next we've got, unless anyone had anything further on that?
Do you know of anything in particular that, I don't think Harold's going to make it, do you have anything, do you have anything in particular that Harold needed to address this? I didn't.
He didn't tell me anything, so, all right. The last thing we do have is Vicki talking about the LOW system, so, is it LOW?
LOW.
LOW, excuse me.
Okay, this is going to be a continuing step in our series of trying to make the budget process more efficient, more accurate, less prone to errors.
More streamlined?
More streamlined.
Less order entry, yeah.
More efficient and effective.
Seamless?
More seamless?
More seamless for these old budget books, we cut down a lot of trees for the, what would happen is that departments would, on the old forms, one of which they sent next to seventy-one, they'd plug in all the-
That's when Soviet first got on the council.
Yes, they'd plug in all these numbers, and the vast majority of these pages were blanked because as you know, a lot of budgets don't handle two-line items, so we didn't need to include all those problems. A few years ago, we started changing the budget process where the department still submit the old form, then the auditor's office took those numbers, we only used their numbers, and we put them in a more easy-to-read spreadsheet that you guys had left, so then this is your budget book last.
Okay.
This will probably be the budget book this year going forward, because you're going to get the explanation letter, you're going to get the salary page, and you're going to get the condensed version of the budget. But what we want to propose is really using our LOW system, so that instead of the department has, taking these paper copies, then sending them in, typing in all the numbers, sending them into our office and your office, sometimes sending them to our office but not your office, sometimes sending them to your office but not our office, sometimes having different budget versions floating around causing-
We get your drift, yep.
Everybody follows their own path.
Everyone, no, we all follow the LOW system, where we will give each department access and-
You know, in all likelihood, it's going to be, it's going to take, yeah, it's going to take a little bit of-
Yeah, we're going to have to training-
It's going to be easy, and I'm going to show you right now.
And they're going to call it LOW.
Are we going to, are we going to have, are we going to have access to that, Vicki? Are we going to have access to that?
Yes, I'm, I'm going to be talking with LOW about whether you can have digital access, but in the meantime, Joy will have it in real time.
And that's, that's something I brought up too.
So every time you want to see, hey, did the auditor's office turn in the budget yet?
But you want to come to the office to do it the way it's currently going to be set up, correct? You can't do it from our home, right?
I'm not sure.
So we're going to need to have, we're going to need to have those to take, to meet, to study, discuss.
I wouldn't use your personal email.
No, not personal, you can feed it, you can't, you can't access it from there, you got to come to us.
My volatility is severed.
I get it, but, so Vicki, do you understand the idea here from our perspective?
At any time, I or Joy could email you or-
That's no good, I, I want to be able to have it in a format that's given to me that I can make notes, changes, always, always-
You're still in, you're still in, you're still in.
You'll still get the papers.
I don't want that.
So we're still carrying treats.
But if it's going to have the department, let's pretend that I'm, well, we don't have to pretend I'm auditor, let's pretend that I'm working on my budget right now.
Let's pretend we're council people.
Okay, yes. Okay, so here's my general fund budget, you just told everyone to flat-line their salaries, so I'm not going to make any changes, okay?
So Vicki just flat-lined everybody's salaries for next year?
Right, but let's say that I want to increase my hourly of fifty thousand.
Thanks, Vicki, that makes our job a lot easier.
And I want to increase training, and I'm going to eliminate all these numbers. Let's say I'm doing it.
I have to see it safe.
And I'm going to process one down, I'm going to increase this to two hundred dollars, let's just say all of that. But here's what a department has to do with-
Why are you raising, why are you raising your hourly to fifty thousand, Vicki?
Yes, it's so, the, I'm-
Do you anticipate a lot of overtime?
I am just done with my budget right now, it saves time for the department heads, saves time for Joy and us, we will still be doing low number crunches, when it comes time for maybe end of July, you want to see the auditor's budget, you'll be able to look at it, whether you can call it up on your own personal computer or just contact one of the-
So here's the thing, we need to, we need to be able to access it though.
Right.
You know, if there's any changes, we need to have, be aware of that, we need to have access to that, we need to be able, because we, a lot of the work we do out of this building.
Right, right.
And the other question that goes along with that is, as we're watching these changes take place, are they going to show up in, I mean, is this program sophisticated enough to show those up in a different color so someone goes back in and alters some of that screen, do they don't?
The department's not that-
Okay, so once it's submitted to you guys, but if we, if we have to, we ask them to go back and do changes.
Yes, so we can always make the changes.
Okay.
So they have to come to you to make the changes, and then you'll be able to tell us about the change that was made.